For those that don't know, we have the Selectman Paul Harrington to my right, Selectman Scott Storrs to my left. And we have here tonight for a public hearing regarding the issue, really two issues. First, the issue of whether or not, and this is not something we're voting on, we just want to hear from the public, about the issue of whether we have an option to purchase 52 Church Street, which is a property adjacent to the Town Hall property, to the immediate west, and for the purposes of using it for the location of a new senior center. And then generally to talk about the need for a new senior center, and if there's other sites that people think that the town should consider. And we'd just like to hear from you regarding that. Just a little background, we had appointed a committee of three individuals, Anne Marie Claffey, who is the Senior Center Director, Gary Merrigan, who is experienced, very well experienced in real estate sales and development, and Bob Crocheteer, who has similar experience and especially in building. That committee engages services of an architect and a landscape architect to get advice and to review the site. They have rendered a report, it's a couple of weeks ago. There's fifty copies of it, I don't know, I hope that's enough, if there's a couple and you want to share one, that would be great. And that report was issued a couple of weeks ago. And there was a general consensus that they liked the location, but there was two concerns. One was regarding a parking, there should be some more work done to determine if the existing parking lot was sufficient. And the second was the issue of whether or not we could acquire property immediately to the south of this property, which is, would be on the middle school side of this property. As to the first issue, we received a report from the firm of Fussell O'Neil, and I believe it was Tuesday, that determined that based on the needs assessment that was performed, the new senior center would require from thirty-five to fifty parking spots, and the current parking lot that existing has just about fifty. And the second bit of information regarding the acquisition of the land behind, I met with, several times with the members of the Board of Directors of the church that's immediately to the west of this site, they also own the land behind, and as of, we met, oh, I was hearing noise and music coming out of my head. They own the property to the immediate south, and as of today, we do have an option to purchase that property as well. The entire, it's about a quarter acre piece, so it would be the property that goes, it's level for a little bit, then it goes down into a gully toward the middle school, and we have the option to purchase that property for a period of sixty days for a price of five thousand dollars. It's not been signed yet, we just hashed it out this afternoon, but if you can, trust members of the church who can't, you trust them. So that, I think addresses the two concerns that were raised. At this point, and the Selectman and I discussed this, you know, we're really not here to talk, we're really here to listen, so I think the easiest thing is to just sort of open it up for questions or comments about either of the two issues that we laid out. And the general idea here is that for the last four years, since, at least since I've been in office, it would seem very clear to me that we needed to start thinking about a new senior center. We've been actively looking for sites since, or looking for opportunities since, and, you know, the location of the senior center as it is now is pretty good. It's close to a lot of things, close to downtown, close to the new train station. The access to the senior center, the building that should be the most accessible building in your community, and our community happens to be the least accessible building. As probably most of you are aware, when people drive there and park in the parking lot across the street, they have, oftentimes, they have to get into a shuttle. We pay a driver to sit in the shuttle to get on there to drive across the street and up the hill to the front door. Doesn't seem to be the most efficient use of town and taxpayer money, and, but, you know, that's what we do. The building itself is, has had its issues with leaking and elevators and things of that nature, but the space is pretty good, and it's just that it's, the accessibility issue is really the biggest problem. So, you know, that's, that's the reason we're, we've been looking. Fifty-two Church Street, I want you to view it as, just as I did, it's an opportunity that popped up. It's something that came up, and we said, you know, we really should take a deep look at this, we should explore this to see if it makes sense. It's not the only site in town, but it's something that popped up, and I thought that the Selectmen, as well as the people in town, should have an option to consider as whether it might serve our purposes. So with that, and I think the report most of you now have, I'll open it up to questions. I think the easiest thing would...
Standing and saying loudly, or rather coming up to me?
Probably.
Why don't we try just standing up, saying your name and address, and then making your comment, try and do it as loud as possible so the people in the audience can hear. Thank you. And I think, Gail, you have the first question.
Thank you. Field Staden, three zero eight South Center Street. I think the senior center should be considered just as we've considered our usable buildings. I think we need to have a need study done. I think that the senior center needs to be accessible to everybody. I worry, I have expressed my worries about the crowd, how downtown is going to get crowded. I don't think it's a good place to send seniors to congested area. I think that we need to have everything on level. All parking, so that the seniors can walk right in from the parking lot, right into the senior center. I don't think we need two floors, I think everything, whatever the square footage is, be it four thousand, be it six thousand, it should all be on one level, so seniors don't have to worry about an elevator, senior descendants, seniors don't have to worry about stairs. I think that we shouldn't have to worry about our seniors being physically challenged and not being able to get in. I also feel that, I have been told by town officials that we need to have it downtown because downtown is where we want everybody to gather. Well, I think that's great, but I think some of our most successful senior centers around where we live are not in the downtown area. No matter where we go...
She did, sorry, my statement. It's over there. But I'd like to read what, what I kind of composed while I had the flu.
Sure. You want to give me that microphone?
Do you want to? She's had it before.
I don't have it anymore.
First, just for one that you're naming ahead for the record.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Sylvester, and I live on Rossway in Windsor Locks, of course. I want to thank the Selectmen for convening this meeting for the purpose of the people to voice their opinions, concerns, and suggestions regarding the relocation of the senior center. And I truly hope that the issue at hand, the senior center, will be the sole focus of this meeting, because I know some of the meetings tend to go in different directions. I know there are a lot of folks here in the audience that could make suggestions much better than I, as far as where the senior center should be, square footage, et cetera. However, I'd like to take a different approach and let everyone know the importance of a senior center that is safe and accessible for the aging, but still vibrant, and we all are, population of Windsor Locks, for the present time as well as the future. Being a senior can be lonely, especially when your life partner is gone and you don't have any children in the area. It's a known medical fact that loneliness and seclusion leads to depression. Now, compound that with physical limitations and the need for canes, walkers, and wheelchairs. This is why the need for a level grounded, single floor dwelling with ample parking spaces is so important, so no senior has to experience this loneliness. Remember, you're all going to be in our shoes someday, and I would hope that you would all consider that when the new center is ready to be built. You know, when I first started to utilize the senior center approximately thirteen years ago, I had just retired, and I wanted to be part of the community. My first visit to the center, I remember having to park across the street and in back a Dunkin' Donuts, because there was no space available in the front of the building. After crossing the street, I climbed up the hill, up the stairs, and into the building. A bit winded, I must admit, I thought to myself, and this place is for seniors? Having been dropped off at the front door a few times, I found it difficult to exit the vehicle, because the door kept closing on me, because it was an uphill grade. But I was determined I was still going to be a part of this community, where I have made many lasting relationships. As the years flew by, I volunteered to answer the phones and help decorate with many memorable dates with Anne Marie and the other girls. During these years, we would hear of the possibility of a new center, but as I said, the years flew by and nothing happened. Many fun, wonderful, and educational programs have happened at the center, such as nutritional seminars, attorney information dates, quilting, watercolor classes, Tai Chi, and those are only a few to mention as to the things that we like to do at the senior center. Now, fast forward to 2020, a few friends and myself have had significant health issues. I myself have had two spinal fusions, and haven't been able to visit the senior center as much as we wanted to, because of lack of accessibility and parking issues. Some accommodations have been made via a bus, however, the building is still across the street and up the hill with the same very limited parking, and it's been over thirteen years of being patient. And we would like to see something in our lifetime happen, progress. I read an article which said, within a decade, listen up, in the United States, it is expected that for the first time, there will be more people sixty-five years of age and older than thirteen years of age and younger. Look around. These are just a few reasons why our present center is no longer viable for Windsor Locks, nor is the speculation of the purchase on 52 Church Street. Bottom line, all we need is a committee comprising of the director of the center, one or more Selectmen, someone from the town possibly planning and zoning, who is knowledgeable and aware of the property and/or buildings that may already be owned by the town, and of course, the seniors to bounce ideas off of, in order to provide a single floor building, so no inoperative elevators are an issue in the future. It is not an issue, it is an issue for the future that we not have anything on a level ground with ample parking for the staff, the transportation vehicles, and most of all, the seniors. Thank you for listening to me. I really hope that when this all comes around, and we finally get to a referendum maybe, that we can get a new center, that everybody works hard to get out the vote, to make sure everybody says yes, let's put our seniors first. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Don DeBjuk, I live at forty-five Cypress Road, and when I first decided I was going to ask some questions, and I really wasn't pro or con the senior center, but after listening to that argument, I would say definitely, let's go pro. But my point was, I also went to the Selectman meeting, I believe it was three weeks ago, and there was discussion going back and forth, and most of the discussion involved buying this, this house at fifty-two Chestnut. And there was discussion that it might be two floors, it might be one floor, but it was made very clear by one of the Selectmen that one floor was the way to go, and that there are other options to this land, purchasing this land, and also the church land, which was going to add some parking, I believe, with a hill involved, which to me didn't make sense for seniors, but in thinking about it, I lived near Southwest. Southwest, I understand, is owned by the town. You want flat land, there's plenty of flat land in Southwest. I would think, my background is an auditor, that rather than spend the money on, well, first of all, the director of the senior center, current director, was saying she prefers a campus, a single campus with Town Hall. Now, honestly, I didn't understand what purpose the campus would serve for the seniors to Town Hall, but then again, I'm not in a position to challenge, but she preferred the campus setting. But again, I'm thinking, I don't know what good that does to you, other than you're going to spend quite a bit of money to acquire this land, which doesn't seem to be the land that would fit the seniors, the seniors' needs. Something like Southwest, which is definitely all flat, there's plenty of land, there's plenty of land for parking, and there was also discussion that night of another municipal services building for police, fire, and so forth. Eventually, it may all be in the same area, but if you own that land already, and you don't have to spend the money for this land here, that's just more money to build a facility that the seniors really need. And to me, the efficiency and the economy of getting this done right dictates that you give serious consideration to something like Southwest versus the need for a single campus downtown. I don't know what benefit it would be for the seniors to be down here, but I do know, since you're already providing them with transportation as it is, Southwest would not be a problem. And again, it gives you a flat land, it can give you a single story building, you can put as much parking as you feel you need, and it just seems, if the solution is already there, at least it's something to consider for a solution, why not give that a little bit of focus versus just focusing on spending the money here when the money could go elsewhere to build a better facility? Thank you.
I'm with him.
Yeah, Mark Witten, three twenty-six Reed Avenue. I have several concerns with that, is, one is, I believe part of our plan is to close Church Street. If we close Church Street, we're going to have a, we're going to have a traffic problem, an extra fifty cars coming and going, a lot. I don't think the property is big enough for an appropriate senior citizen center. I'm in favor of one. I'm actually a senior citizen now, so, I'm in favor of a new one. But we need to reutilize other properties that we have that we're not using, i.e. IPC Club. That's one point one acres of land, flat, okay? Not a lot of traffic on that part of Suffield Street, so we don't have a traffic issue. It's close to the downtown, we don't have to procure anything, so there's no procurement, it's just raise the building and go build a new one. I mean, and I don't know if there's any other unutilized town property. I know there's some lots off of Ellis Street, but that's not really conducive, because there's a brook and a pond and stuff. And I don't think Southwest is going to be big enough, because there's ball fields there, and there's football field, soccer field, but I think the IPC Club would be an ideal location for egress. I believe it's one acre plus is a big enough piece of land for a one level dwelling, plenty of parking. What I would think would be nice is, you get the property, maybe you have shuffleboard or bocce ball or something, so during, our summer, we can get out and play some sports, you know, that won't hurt us too much. But that was my two cents on it.
Just to clarify, what Mr. Witten is referring to is the former Italian progressive club, I think it's ninety-seven Suffield Street.
Ninety-seven Suffield.
The town has recently acquired that property through tax foreclosure. We had a engineer examine it, and unfortunately, structurally, it's not really up to code for institutional use, so it would have to either be substantially restored or renovated to reuse the existing building, or that building would have to be raised and a new building erected.
It's actually cheaper to tear it down and start a scratch.
Most cases it is these days, yeah.
It's built nineteen thirty, I believe.
So it's almost in Suffield on the right side as you go?
I don't know if you know where Circle Drive is?
Oh, yeah.
Right across from Circle Drive.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Witten. Any other comments, questions? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Lenny Mountainville, two oh seven South Center Street. I hear a lot of good points, a lot of different perspectives. Seems like one of the most prevalent ones is they want it to be on the first floor, on one level. I guess I, I have a couple of questions on this report on the senior center. It says a committee was appointed to evaluate the property at fifty-two Church Street, and then it goes on to talk about, you know, some work that was done with Kuski. There's a number in here of eleven thousand six hundred, six hundred and fifty-eight square feet. I guess what really concerns me is typically, before you would start a site search, you'd have a couple of pieces of information that would have been developed. The first one would have been like a scoping exercise, where you start to develop what the requirements are for senior center. Those would then be taken by a building committee and put into a program planning document, which is going to yield the number of square footage, the square footage you need for a project. I'm not sure any of that work has really been done, so if you don't know what the square footage is you need, how can you be looking at a piece of property? It just seems that there's a lot of things out of sequence here, if you want to do the job and be, you know, well rest assured that what's going to be ultimately built is going to fit your needs. I mean, it seems like there's a few things that are very unclear in reading what was a report now, that says it could have been an unqualified endorsement. I mean, there's a lot of question marks here. I mean, number one, I could tell you that if you're looking for a senior center, I've probably been at ten senior centers that have been built in the past ten or twelve years, that would know, in no way, shape, or form, could be put on that piece of property at fifty-two Church Street, even if you had guarantees right now that you could get adjacent pieces of land, because a couple of the things that are going to come out of the scoping document or a program plan are, it's got to be a flat site. Well, you're not going to have a completely flat site if you start with fifty-two and you acquire properties that are not flat adjacent to it. I wonder, what was the committee actually charged with? Is it a building committee? Is it a site search committee? Is it a, what's the function of the committee?
You're absolutely correct, but the sequencing is a bit out of whack.
A bit? Okay.
It is out of whack.
All right.
No need to sarcasm. So the point is, is that the opportunity arose, if we decided that we were going to go about actively looking, if we had, if we decided that we had the money set aside, and we're actively looking to find a site for the new senior center, we would have approached it, obviously, in a manner more close to what you've described, where we have a thorough identification of the needs, space needs, all of those things that go into it. And then we would see what sites are available, perhaps put out a request for qualifications, you know, so that we could, you know, determine that. In this case, an opportunity arose that was limited in time, and because the site seemed certainly promising, not guaranteed, but promising, we felt, well, we should take a look at this opportunity while it's presented itself. If the opportunity won't be there in a couple of months, or likely it won't be there in a few months. So we approached it as to site specific. This opportunity has come up, we should secure the opportunity for ourselves, so at least enough time to examine it, to see whether or not it meets our need. The architect was consultant, he came in, and he met with the senior center, I think with other personnel, perhaps Kona, but he certainly met with the director of the senior center, and they did a thorough review of the space now, and what the needs were for now and for the future, and that's where he came to the number that he came to. But it was, you know, it was abbreviated, the best that he could do in the time that we had, so that we could take a look. So you're absolutely right, that if we were approaching this in a different way, we would have taken that broader view, but, you know, life doesn't always come at you the way you expect it. Sometimes, an opportunity arises, and you need to do the best you can to examine it, and that's, that's the process.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, it was abbreviated timeframe, but what I would strongly recommend and suggest to you is that if it's a limited period of time that you have to exercise an option, that if it's not at least eight months to a year, you don't have enough time to do a scoping document and a program plan to be at a comfort level that you need to have to buy a piece of property. You're really putting the cart before the horse if you do that, and to rush a process because you may lose an option on a piece of property would be, could be disastrous for the town. Financially, as well as long term, for would it really suit the needs and fit what you have to program for senior center?
Thank you.
I mean, I would say strongly, don't do that.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jane Persino, and I'm over on Rossway in Windsor Locks also. Could you just explain to me what that five thousand dollars land is? What is it?
Yes.
I can't believe we've been thinking, five thousand dollars, take my taxes and just appoint it there, that'll pay for the land. I mean, if it's adjacent or close here, why should we not buy land for five thousand dollars? No, 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 I'm saying, if we need, if the opportunity is something connected to here or that in the future we can use it here, nothing to do with the senior center, I can't believe you're even discussing five thousand dollars. As far as the senior center goes, we all pay taxes in this town, and we're supporting all the schools, and if the schools need to be renovated or built, we pay our taxes and they fix the schools. Well, you know what, we're paying taxes, unlike a lot of people in the south, I feel that we deserve a new senior center, and on flat land, and if we don't need to buy the land, take the five thousand dollars and go buy the land that's adjacent to here to use in the future.
Let's be real, a little clearer about the amount of money we're talking about. And I'm sorry if I was unclear earlier. The option price for fifty-two Church Street is a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, which is the exact amount that we value the property for when we levy their taxes.
Right.
It would be, to me, when we set that value and attach you on that value, to me, it would be awkward and perhaps even offensive to say, oh, and by the way, we want to buy it, and we think it's worth much less than we just put the value we're taxing you on. So that was what the offer was made at that level, and that's what was accepted for the purpose of the option. Jen, did you know how to get back to the other picture? Is this, is it in PowerPoint? Oh, scroll.
What is the five thousand dollars that you mentioned? I guess, I'm new to the rodeo, I don't know what the five thousand dollars is.
It's a good question, so, so, in the report that was rendered by the committee, they suggested that, okay, that's a little, yeah. So you see where the arrow is on the bottom corner?
Over to the right.
Yeah, bottom right corner.
I see it, yeah, yeah.
So what's in blue is the, is fifty-two Church Street.
Okay.
The one immediately to the left of it is the church, it's the church, okay? Now, if you slow, just go down to the one that's drawn.
No, it's behind, it's behind, it's before a gully.
So, the architect took the, what he determined to be the square footage needs from the building, any blue building, conceptually of that size, that's the building on, not where the far right corner, bottom right corner is the church, the one to the left is conceptually the new senior center. There's plenty of room on that site to place that building. However, the landscape architect got involved and said, but if we have to put it right out by the road, it's not going to look good, and it would be so much better if we could push it back to the lot. And visually, that would allow for the turnaround area with a sidewalk that serves both the church and the senior center, so that senior buses could come in into that curve area and drop people off right in front of the building. Plus, you'd have all that, the handicap, the blue spaces along the street, could be handicap accessible spaces close to the front of the building. That here would be your handicap section, right? Here's your turnaround, where your buses would... The buses would come in, yeah, right there, and then go out. This is the area where you run.
Okay, I get it. The extra five... The extra $5,000 is to, if you bought that property.
Yes, sir.
Extra $5,000 would be to extend the property a little bit.
To push it backwards.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were just discussing.
Because as you go onto the land and back, there's some, you know, the curvy lines are the slope lines. So there's some additional level land on that property.
If the senior center.
And then it starts to slow down.
If the senior center was going to go there, I agree.
Right, so the idea would be to push it back on the lot, have the same size footprint, or larger, because there's room to widen that footprint quite a bit, and still maintain the number of spaces in the parking lot. Because we have, you know, we don't have to worry about the property law.
Right, well, I agree with that lady, one of the ladies here, the lady in the red sweater.
Who, Gail, somebody agrees?
Save the $100,000 or $157,000 piece of, and put it into the new senior center on property we already own.
Well, it's much more conducive to our needs, and in fact, we need to do it.
Well, wait, well, it's people that have been, haven't been heard from since, but I will come back. Yes, ma'am?
Mary Campbell, 24 Center Street. I walk this area a lot. I have a big dog, she walks a lot. That land behind that house is not just a little ditch, it's a deeper being.
Yeah.
It would take a lot to fill that in or make it usable for a senior center. The parking lot for the town hall gets very full very fast, because not only do the employees use it, but St. Mary's Church uses it, and on occasion, the church next door uses it. So I don't see where, if you've got all these entities using that same parking lot, there's going to be sufficient parking. And I mean, that land, if you want a campus-type setting, there's not enough land there to put a campus-type setting in this new senior center. And I'm just, you know, at first I thought, oh, great idea, that's a lovely place, and we've got the parking lot here. But it, I'm looking at it now, saying, somehow, if we already have land that we can use, why not? Why spend a hundred and some thousand dollars on something we don't own, and that may not work or be sufficient? And I know about the senior center because I'm a volunteer there, and I've been going for a number of years now, and I love the people there, it's a great entity, we don't know how lucky we are, but we're not giving our seniors what they deserve as far as the senior center is concerned.
Just a couple of points. As far as the parking, you're right that the church, both churches, the church, depicted there, uses those spaces in the parking lot on Sunday when they hold their services.
During the week as well. I walk this area several times a day.
And St. Mary's Church also Saturday, Sunday generally uses the town hall parking lot.
Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays.
So for the most part, the senior center isn't, doesn't operate on Sunday. So to some extent, it's, they're complementary, those uses, but it's a good point. The second thing is, we would not fill in the land to the back. We would utilize, utilize just the level portion of that land, and then it would be designed so that it'd be essentially like a walkout basement, there'd be a walkout into the rear. So what this shows is. So, these contour lines that are shown, that's the hill. And the hill, the lower portion extends, and so the structure all the way to the center tops, that's where the new amphitheater in town is going. Those who attended the John Chapman Memorial about a year ago, we sort of tested, tested that out and brought in a temporary stage. And so now we're, what's under design is to assign for a permanent benchell stage to utilize that area as the, an amphitheater, which would be the site, hopefully, of our summer concert series and those types of things. So, aside from the level land that's up, that's all that rear lot would be used for. The rest of it might be cleared a bit and incorporated into the design of the amphitheater. So if you're attending an event in the amphitheater, you could enter the senior center, the lower level, on the backside. But we would not be filling that in and utilizing, you know, trying to make the level land where it doesn't exist. We would build, we would utilize the level land that's there up top and a little bit build into the slope that exists, and use the slope to our advantage and not try and fill it in.
No, I didn't think so, but it's still, it's not just a little ditch.
Oh, it's big, yeah, right, I agree with you. Yes?
Bob Anderson, 53 Rosway.
Todd, could you just stand up so that you can see where your face is?
You seem to be focusing on this, so I haven't heard anything about any other properties you're actually looking at. I'm asking, there's a place on Spring Street, right near Airways, to the right of it. Big open lot, it has a building there. Are you looking at sites that might be available, or like even a flat piece of land like one of the parks?
So, honestly, we're really not at this time. We're aware of those, but we're not actively looking for other sites. That is a process that is, if it turned out that this site, there was a consensus that this was such a good site, we should just grab this and go with it, we wouldn't need that process. Obviously, if that's not the case, and the consensus is that this is not the right opportunity, we shouldn't pursue it, then we close that book, and then we go into the full process of a site search. So, those, there are other sites in town that we're aware of, certainly, we've been all keeping our eyes open and thinking of opportunities, but we haven't done the full search, as, you know, as has been suggested by Mr. Montemirolo, which would be the normal process to go through. So we are taking it out of sequence, and we are aware that there are other sites out there, some of which may be preferable when all said and done.
If this has been going on for, I know, fifteen years of looking at a site, why aren't we looking at sites now instead of focusing on one? You know we need it, you want to have it, why not look at other places first?
And have a plan first.
Pick up something and then decide what you want to, with the time.
Well, it's a question of the political will to enter that process. Up till now, you know, it's been, to me, it's been very apparent that we need a new senior center, right from the get-go, at least when I say from the get-go, I mean when I was personally at the office. So the question is, at what point do you make that push? Where you assemble the appropriate people, you start talking about the financing, the funding that's necessary, and say, this is what we're going to do, we're going to tackle this project. My approach had been to look for opportunities, and if the right opportunity came up, we'd pursue it. And I will be honest, that there was a particular site that I'm aware of, that unfortunately is, it's still owned and operational as another function, that we received some word on that may be coming available. And, you know, I had the firm belief that if it did become available, that would be something that we really should pursue. And I've sort of been waiting to see what happened there, and it's still, nothing's happened there, it's still right where it was. So when this opportunity came up, you know, I thought, well, maybe this is, you know, this is just something else that we should pursue. So we haven't decided that we're going to dive into that. We're going to build a new senior center, come hell or high water, and let's start the search process. I feel the time is ripe to do that, and maybe, maybe when all is said and done, even if this isn't the opportunity, maybe it served a purpose because it really got us focused on the needs, and maybe we'll launch that if it turns out not to be the opportunity. Very good question, and you're right, there are other sites out there. Yes, ma'am, in the middle.
I like his southwest idea. I think it's all flat, you're right near the senior housing. People entertain there in summer concerts going on, there's a lot going on in that area, there's parks for little kids to go play in. I like that area a lot. Why don't we investigate something that's, we don't have to tear anything down, we don't have to fill anything in, we don't have to, it's not in the center of town, you could plant it downtown.
Is anyone in the room aware of the ownership status of the southwest property?
I thought we owned it, the town.
I think the Housing Authority owns a good one. They're not the town. And we'd have to buy that too, is what I'm saying.
Well, let's look at it.
But I.
It looks a lot better than a home.
But I think, I don't think the town owns that property, or at least needs to follow the property, but I would have to check that out.
It seems a lot nicer than.
Back, Mr. Guinusio.
Callie Guinusio, 136. 136 Frank Street. Over the years, being on a land use board for twenty-plus years, one of the properties that seems to get inquiries, and probably would use some creativity, is what about the land adjacent to the leaf dump? You've got a flat surface there, you've got some space, you would still be able to operate the recycling facility there. You know, different developers have expressed interest over the years in doing something there as well, so that's just.
You mean the site, not the site of the compost facility, but the land.
But the land adjacent that the town owns is part of, there's, I believe, another lot adjacent to that spot.
Is it on the street, or is it in the back?
I think it's on the street.
I think it's landlocked.
But if we own the, if we have the dump already, we could put in an access. I mean, you know, developers have certainly seen.
Thanks a lot, if you don't mind.
Henry Nato, 135 Montemirolo Ave. My question's in regards to 52 Chestnut Street is, does the soil, church?
We have been talking a lot about Chestnut.
Yeah. So 52 Chestnut, or Church, does the soil meet compaction rate for an 11,000-square-foot building to go on that property? Because I know the soil at Church Street is, part of that is for the retaining walls coming up, because the soil doesn't meet compaction rate for a retaining wall to be put in over there. Does this soil meet that, and are we going to run into the same problems trying to put up an 11,000-square-foot building over here? Because this is what I do, I do construction for a living.
There's been no testing to determine if that's.
Okay, and then with the erosion of that huge hole that's there, that's erosion that's caused that hole that's in the back of that property, has anybody looked into why that's happening? At the back of that property, there's erosion.
I thought that was naturally formed, that that belly's been there since.
Well, I'm sure it's consistently eroding as well, and that's why the belly keeps getting bigger, the way it is. With all the other brook problems that we have, especially in this general area right here, I'm sure it's erosion. So my questions are, is that going to be more of a problem with trucking in of materials and getting compaction rate to hold up in support of a building that will be put up there?
I'm not, the architect didn't know for the landscape department that either, that materials would have to be brought in, so I'm not sure that they did look at that, but I think they, you know, that they.
Because I know right now, I'm doing, I'm building the senior center in Long Meadow Mass right now, and we're at $2.5 million for soil that didn't meet compaction rate for the building that's there.
That's a great point, thank you for bringing it up. Somebody who hasn't gone yet, yes, from the back center?
Hi, my name's Robinson Zach, and I am not a senior, but I am a resident of Windsor Locks. And I just wanted to take it back really quickly to the process you were saying was kind of out of order. So my background is that I'm a nurse, and it's my job as a nurse to, when I take care of people and meet people, do things according to their developmental stages in life, and take in consideration the assistances that they need. I think that Windsor Locks has a great job with our youth and in our schools, and I do think that we are lagging behind when it comes to our seniors. If we're moving forward as a community, I really feel like we need to bring the whole community forward with us. So going back to the process, one of the things that they do in public health is that they take surveys and polls in the community. And I wanted to ask, have we done that amongst the seniors and amongst the whole, the community as a whole, to find out what it is that the seniors do need, so that they're not going to other towns to have their needs met? Also, a consideration for the senior center and the space that it would encompass is that this could also become a community spot, so that, you know, we talked about seniors in solitude and leading to depression. But if we get seniors, and I'm sure everybody in this room will agree, to interact as a whole community. So if we have things like Easter egg hunts and things like that, that we could have either here at the town hall or at the community center and the senior center, it would bring the community together as a whole. So I think that the first step in the process should be to create some kind of poll, some kind of survey that we send out to the residents of Windsor Locks specific to the situation. And then, in addition, instead of waiting for opportunities to arise, perhaps actively pursuing other spots of land. Because it seems to me, from listening to the forum and listening to what I've heard tonight, that this is not really what the people and the seniors want. They want more options, at the very least, more options to see where else could this go? Thank you for listening.
It's a good comment, and you're right. If we go into full search mode, I think that process that you've mentioned definitely should be part of it, no question about it. Anyone else who has not gone once yet? Okay, Mr. Russo?
Russo, 407 Elmwood Drive, town. Do we have the total cost figure for acquiring the property and the cost to do the necessary modifications that are being proposed?
Well, the acquisition cost would be 171,000 plus 5,000, so 176,000.
How about any revamping reconstruction of the premises? Paving?
Estimate the site work and the building itself?
Yeah.
No, we have a rough estimate, but no.
Okay. I'd just like to say, Chris, that I agree with Mr. Montemirolo. When that report came in, it wasn't really well-received. And I believe that Scott and Paul sort of said, why don't we stop and get some public input? And I'd like to thank them for doing that, because as you can see, most of the people here, I believe, aren't really in favor of purchasing 52 Church Street. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Whitton? Oh, go ahead, sir.
I've got a couple of questions about this Church Street property. One, it was built like in the 1900s or something? So does it have lead paint, asbestos shingles, you know, siding, asbestos floors that we're going to have to pay extra to have it?
There could be remediation costs, no question.
Have you ever resolved a thing with non-heroe property?
Well, that's a subject for a different, a different time. But the short answer is no. I think we're, oh, Kitty, anything on you? Would you mind standing just a second? I know you like to reject, so.
Talk to the people.
I am, I'm against this one, I just don't think it's going to work. I am for possibly Southwest Avenue, you already have seniors living there. I don't know how many units they have there, or how many seniors live there.
Fifty.
Fifty?
It's not just seniors.
Not all seniors?
No.
No.
Oh, okay. But if, for the ones that are there, it would be easy access for them. There's plenty of room there for a volunteer fire department carnival every year, why wouldn't it be room for a senior center? And also, in reference to this one, I think we heard talk at one time that possibly Church Street was going to be closed off.
Likely.
Like, you're going to have seniors over here, a lot more people congregating on this street. Emergency vehicles and possibly ambulances for elderly people and stuff. Is that going to be a good thing? One entrance into the street? Down to the point, I don't know if I'm pointing in the right direction, wherever this place is.
Okay, we'll forgive you, you're a senior.
Yeah, I don't know which direction.
They turned you around, Kitty, saying, like, this area.
You know, to me, Southwest, is it accessible, it's flat land, I understand, I'm not sure who owns it, I guess, if the town does, or whoever. The other place mentioned up on Spring Street sounds viable, where the old daycare was, that's all flat. And as far as the comments made about having a senior center down in the center, how many seniors actually go to the center and then start walking around all over town to go somewhere? My guess is they go to the senior center for the activities there. So I don't think it's going to matter to them that it's downtown. They can take the senior bus to anywhere in town.
Well, one, there's about eight seniors on average that walk to the senior center per day. But we really can't envision downtown as it is now, we're talking about the downtown that's coming, so, you know, the consideration is whether or not they would want to be closer to that site, the shopping, the other opportunities, and a more, obviously, more pedestrian-friendly downtown than we enjoy now. and the shopping, the other opportunities, and a more, obviously, more pedestrian friendly downtown than we enjoy now. But I understand you. Yes, ma'am?
Mary Ann Desicich, the thing that I, I, the only thing I found favorable is outside activity, physical outside activity. A space for it, for seniors to go out and sit at a picnic table in the good weather. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the, the general, one concept in this design, this is... Is the rear portion of the building would, uh, on the main level, would be a deck or patio uh, that seniors could take advantage of, which it would be overlooking the amphitheater. So in the summer concert series, they'd have that, that vantage point where they could enjoy their music from. But your, your point is that there's not really other level area around for recreation, picnic tables, and that thing.
Chris, if I may, may spur some another round of, uh, questions or concerns or, uh... So from what, sitting here, listening to, to all of you, it, it, it sounds like, you know, one of the things that we took on this year in this budget, you know, some fifty thousand dollar expenditures, we did a need study for all of our public safety complexes, which includes the fire, the police, and the ambulance. And in that need study, you look at that fifty thousand dollar number, is first they found out what those three particular branches needed. And they finished that. We've gotten these reports, uh, about two or three weeks ago at a board of selectmen meeting, and it, and it listed, you know, roughly what, you know, it came back as a study of what they needed. The next step in the process, and I think Mr. Montemurillo was talking about it, is now they're going out and doing site surveys to find out what could be done or where can this be built exactly. So I'll throw it out there, just so you know, right now, there's nothing in the budget that, that allows for this type of a study. The board can meet, we could ship it to the Board of Finance, but we would need all of you to come out and support that initiative to get that funding to start some study like that, if that's the road that this group and the town feels like we should go with, is to start that study. So yes, you're not gonna see a shovel in the ground in a week. Not gonna see it. I mean, we started this process, Chris, when did we start that process?
Last year.
We started a year and a half.
Okay, a year and a half ago for the public safety. So it, but to Mr. Montemurillo's point, I think it's doing it. You, you're getting everything done. And so I don't want you to lose patience if we decide, and you all decide, that's the route we should take, because that does take time. I'm all for it, but I also heard concerns of let's do it now, let's do it now. Well, now...
Not now, just in our lifetime.
Just in our life. I don't know any way.
Who's the measuring, Sandy?
Twenty years.
Yeah, give me the measuring line.
You'll look for it, right?
Okay. If I got twenty years, okay. Um, but I, I, I throw that out there to just see if that spurs any more... I'll use the word debate, conversations, questions, but, you know, that, from where I sat and listened to all that, that sounds like the general consensus, but I don't wanna say that because a bunch could stand up and say that's a horrible idea, which is great. You should do that if you think it's a horrible idea. So that's all I have to say for now.
Anyone else? I think people that we've heard from first, Mr. Whitten, we can go back. This is Curvick, for those that don't know, we have the selectmen, Paul Harrington to my right, selectman Scott Storrs to my left. And, uh, we have a, here tonight for a public hearing regarding the issue, really two issues. Uh, first, the issue of whether or not, um, and this is not something we're voting on. We just wanna hear from the public about the issue of whether we have an option to purchase fifty-two Church Street, which is a property adjacent to the town hall property to the immediate west and for the purposes of, uh, using it for the location of a new senior center. And then generally to talk about, uh, the need for a new senior center and if there's other sites that people think that the town should consider. And we'd just like to hear from you regarding that. Just a little background, we, um, we had appointed a committee of three individuals. Uh, Henry Claffey, who is the senior center director, Gary Merrigan, who is, uh, experienced, uh, very well experienced in, uh, real estate sales and development, and Bob Crochetiere, who has similar experience and especially in building. That committee engaged the services of an architect and a landscape architect to get advice and to review the site. Uh, they have rendered a report. It's a, a couple of weeks ago.
Yes?
There's fifty copies of it. I don't know, I hope that's enough. If, if, if there's a couple and you wanna share one, that would be great. And, uh, that report was issued a couple of weeks ago. And there was a general consensus that they, they liked the location, but there was two concerns. Uh, one was regarding a, uh, parking. There should be some more work done to determine if the, the existing parking lot was sufficient. And the second was, uh, the issue of whether or not we could acquire property immediately to the south of this property, which is, uh, would be on the middle school side of this property. Uh, as to the first issue, we received a report from, um, the, uh, firm of Boston O'Neil on, I believe it was Tuesday, that determined that, uh, based on the needs assessment that was performed, the, the, the new senior center would require from thirty-five to fifty, uh, parking spots. And the current parking lot that existing has just about fifty. And the second bit of information regarding the acquisition of the, the land behind, um, the, I met with, uh, several times with the, uh, members of the board of directors of the church that's immediately to the west of this site. They also own the land behind. And as of, uh, we met in... Oh, that's Jack. Thought I was hearing noise and music coming out of my head. Um, they own the, the property to the immediate south. Uh, and, uh, as of today, we do have an option to purchase that property as well. Uh, the entire, it's about a quarter acre piece. So it would be the, the property that goes, it's leveled for a little bit, and then it goes down into a gully toward the middle school. And, uh, we'd have the option to purchase that property for a period of sixty days, uh, for a price of five thousand dollars. Uh, that's not been signed yet. We just hashed it out this afternoon. But, um, if you can't trust members of the church, you can't do trust. Um, so, uh, that, that, I think addresses the two concerns that were raised. At this point, uh, and this, selectman and I discussed this, uh, you know, we're really not here to talk. We're really here to listen. So I think the easiest thing is to just sort of open it up, um, for questions or comments about either of the two issues that we, we laid out. And the, the general idea here is that, uh, that for the last four years, that since, at least since I've been in office, it would seem very clear to me that we needed to start thinking about a new senior center. Uh, we've been actively looking for sites since, or looking for opportunities since. And, um, you know, the, the location of the senior center as it is now is, is pretty good. Uh, it's close to a lot of things, close to downtown, close to the new train station. The access to the senior center, the, the building that should be the most accessible building in your community, and our community happens to be the least accessible building. Um, as probably most of you are aware, when people drive there and park in the parking lot across the street, they have, oftentimes, they have to get into a shuttle. Uh, we pay a driver to sit in the shuttle to get on there, to drive across the street and up the hill to the front door. Doesn't seem to be the most efficient use of town and taxpayer money. Um, and, uh, but it, you know, that's what we do. The building itself is, uh, is, uh, it's had its issues with leaking and elevators and things of that nature. But the space is pretty good. Uh, and, and it's just that it's, uh, the accessibility issue is really the biggest problem. So, um, you know, that's, that's the reason we're, we're, we've been looking. Fifty-two Church Street, I want you to view it as, as just as I did. It's an opportunity that popped up. It's something that came up, and it was, you know, we really should take a deep look at this. We should explore this to see if it makes sense. It's not the only site in town. Uh, it, but it's something that, that popped up, and I thought that, that the selectmen, as well as the people in town, should have an opportunity to consider as whether it might serve our, our purposes. So with that, and I think the report most of you now have, I'll open it up to questions. I think the easiest thing would... Standing and saying it loudly or rather coming up in line?
Probably, yeah.
Why don't we try just standing up, saying your name and address, and then making your comment? Try and do it as loud as possible so the people in the audience can hear. Thank you. And I think, Gail, you have the first honors.
Thank you. Uh, Phoebe Staden, three zero eight South Center Street. I think, uh, the senior center should be considered just as we've considered our usable buildings. I think we need to have a need study done. Um, I think that the senior center needs to be accessible to everybody. I worry, I, you, I have expressed my worries about the crowd, what, how downtown is gonna get crowded. I don't think it's a good place to send seniors to congested area. I think that, uh, we need to have everything on level. All the parking, a lot, so that the seniors can walk right in from the parking lot, right into the senior center. I don't think we need two floors. I think everything, whatever the square footage is, be it four thousand, be it six thousand, it should all be on one level. So seniors don't have to worry about an elevator. Senior descent, seniors don't have to worry about, um, stairs. I think, uh, we shouldn't have to worry about our seniors being physically challenged and not being able to get in. I also feel that, um, so, I, I have been told by town officials that we need to have it downtown because downtown is where we want everybody to gather. Well, I think that's great, but I think some of our most successful senior centers around where we live are not in the downtown area. Um, no matter where we go...